Here's what it looks like. So here's three copies of it that we'll leave with you all, and I'm sure you'll read every single page of it. So anyway, so my name is Tyler Wainwright, you guys know that already. Uh, just give you a little outline here of what we're gonna be talking about. Uh, basically, we'll provide the information of why we started this in the first place. Uh, all the data that we collected, how we built the model, and then what it is that we plan on doing with it and what you can do with it. So just a quick background here. Total area of Gateway as far as the Gateway C D itself, four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight acres. The actual drainage basin into Gateway is fairly significantly larger. It's around sixty-eight hundred, so we take offsite flows from the east from the Timber Creek area, uh, from across Daniels, from a little bit of that airport parcel, and then from the south, the Pelican Preserve, out of, uh, excuse me, Bridge Town. So, uh, Gateway, as you know, consists of a little over a hundred lakes, a whole bunch of weirs. We ultimately discharge into the Six Mile Slough that flows south down into, uh, Ten Mile Canal and ultimately to Stereopay as the final point of destination. Um, and then just a comment that, you know, from an engineering standpoint anyway, the frequency of storms and design storm events has increased pretty significantly actually, over the last, uh, ten to twenty-five years. So that's something that we kind of discuss in here also. So what is our objective here? Our objective was to create a, um, large-scale, broad model of the Gateway C D D. So this is not a finite model where we're talking about modeling, for example, Lake Eighty-three and the flows into it and the flows out of it. This is a large-scale, seven-thousand-acre model where we're discussing flows throughout the entire system. Um, what we're looking for here ultimately is to be able to use this model as justification for, um, our flow conditions, how we may impact downstream, uh, users and downstream areas. And if we want to make improvements inside of our, uh, basins, then this would provide the justification of why we're able to do that without adversely affecting others. So that's kind of where we're at. That's a whole bunch of words, but basically what we're telling you here is that we use a whole bunch of data to, to get to this model. So a lot of it is, uh, research through historical areas to define, uh, historic drainage basins. Um, we went through various record drawings, a whole lot of record drawings, to delineate those. Uh, the software that we used to create the model is I C P R version four. Um, and then, like I said, or like we will be discussing in a little bit, uh, we'll discuss the calibration and how that all gets handled and why we waited until this point to use all of that data over the summer rainy season before we presented it to you. Um, so I'll show you a couple of maps here in a second. Uh, but the data that we used is the South Florida Water Management District land use land cover maps. Uh, FEMA has a bunch of flood maps that we used also, National Wetland Inventory, N R C S soil curves. Um, and then the most recent version of the two thousand and eighteen U S G S LiDAR data that came out was also extremely helpful. Uh, if you guys don't know what LiDAR is, that's, uh, basically satellite data of topography throughout the area and, and elevation that we've taken. We import that into our model also. So just some basic maps here to look at. Top left one, that's actually the wetland conservation area map for all of Gateway. Uh, the soils map in the top right, that kind of defines how are limits of how fast we estimate water to percolate into or how fast we estimate water to run off of. The one in the bottom left, that's the land use map of Gateway, pretty consistent, you're pretty much all residential, a little bit of commercial sprinkled in. And then the one in the bottom right, that's the, uh, the FEMA map of this area. So, uh, I don't really want to read these to you, but this is just a point of saying, uh, these are the main components that we've put into, uh, the model, which is the five weirs. We also have some, some major flow conditions that come into your area like Timber Creek, uh, Arborwood Parcel, and then our outflow into Six Mile Slough. So this is just kind of our boundary conditions of the model. So model building strategy, uh, to not get very technical about it, here's what we do. We take all of this data and we make a big old map. And then we apply various storm events to that area. And we use this modeling software to estimate, um, where that water's going to go, how long it's going to be there, how high it's going to get. Uh, and then we go through and we simulate different storm events that I'll mention, I think, on the next slide. Uh, and then we come to an end game and we say, okay, does this make sense or does this need to be calibrated with real life? And if it does, why? Are we missing information? Are we missing a pipe connection somewhere? Did we misjudge the height of this structure? Whatever, various reasons of why it may be different than, uh, real life. So this is what the model looks like. Each one of those blue dots right there is a lake. Each one of the pipes connecting to it is the major conveyance pipes between them. We did not model, like, all of the individual street connections to the lakes just because it, it's not that scale of the model. This is a more lake-to-lake style model, basin-to-basin style model. So that's the, that's what it looks like. So after we run it, sorry, the storm was on the next one. But after we run it, we go through and we calibrate it. So that curve area right there, uh, it's kind of a little bit small on your screen, I think. But on the left-hand side is the rainfall and on the bottom is the date. So that's actually this summer. We got that data from your data loggers and then input that into our model. And then on the bottom right, that table right there, that's basically how close we were to what you recorded. So that's what we said it, we thought it was gonna be and then how close it was in real life. So the one on the right is actually the difference in feet at specific areas. So it's an absolute difference, so it doesn't mean that it's point one-one feet above, it's just point one-one different. It could be above, it could be below, uh, so on and so forth. So kind of a, a standard error in, in this practice of modeling is about point three feet. Point three feet, you're, you're pretty close to a stage height. Um, and with the exception of, I think, one site, all of those were, were fairly accurate. That's prior to calibration. So post-calibration, this is what we go through and we look at and we say, okay, this area was different, why? You know, it could be maybe a pipe was clogged, maybe a pipe wasn't built, maybe we missed something, could be a lot of things. But that's why we go through that calibration effort and try to find out that data. So the one thing I'll mention here is the bigger the storm event, the better you can get a model calibrated. Fortunately, unfortunately, we really didn't get any big events this year. I think if you'll see there, the, the highest intensity we got was like, uh, two, three inches over a day, which is a lot of rain, but it's not a major storm what we can consider. So it's, it's a fairly accurate calibration, but over the years, we can go back and we can recalibrate it to get it even tighter if we want to. Okay, here's the one about the storm. So I think I might have explained this at a meeting or two ago, but how engineers consider storms is in, um, terms of years. So a five-year, twenty-five-year, hundred-year storm event. What we're actually saying is the annual, uh, likelihood of occurrence on a five-year storm is twenty percent. So the twenty percent likelihood that storm will occur in any given year. A twenty-five-year storm has a four percent chance any given year. A one-hundred-year storm has a one percent chance any given year. Now, as I said earlier about the frequency and intensity of storms, back in two thousand, whatever it was, one hundred and seventeen? It actually had two, in about three-week span. So that's like almost hitting the lottery odds allegedly, right? That's one percent, one percent over three weeks, that's like unheard of almost.
And the ponds were in control.
And the ponds were in control. So that's actually the last event there that we run. So I'm showing you these because these are all the events that we ran in this model. And then the very last one was we got the rain data, um, from the nearest area, which I think was Page Field, was the one that continuously recorded throughout that storm. And we applied that to this model to see what would happen. So here's the results. Uh, all those numbers you see right there are in C F S cubic feet per second. And that's the flow out of those weirs. So that's weir one, starting all the way out in, uh, Six Mile, all the way down to weir five, which is in, um, Gateway Greens. So as it should, the flow increases through each one of those weirs. Uh, that's, that's pretty close to what you were, were permitted to have. It's, it's pretty close to what you were expected to have. So that's good, your original design engineer did a fairly good job with that. Um, that's pretty much it for that number. So this is the actual model output. Um, what's trying to be shown here is that the darker the blue is the higher the depth of water elevation during that storm event. So where you see the really light blue, that's pretty much nothing, that's just sprinkles on the ground. Where you see the really dark blue, that's, that's a deeper flood depth. So the areas that are concentrated in the dark blue, you can kind of see like up in the Stony Brook area, you're getting a little bit darker, kind of around Magnolia Lakes area, you're getting a little bit darker blue, which I think lines up pretty closely to what you experience in real life, uh, as far as, you know, where you see flood depths occurring. So this is the same area, different model run, this is at the hundred-year, twenty-four-hour event. Um, there's not really a change in the areas here, you're pretty much getting the same results in the same sort of areas, which is to be expected. Uh, this is the hundred-year seventy-two hours. So this is, this is where you design home structures to. So different things are designed to different storm elevations, like the roads, for example, are designed to a five-year storm event. Um, your perimeter berms are designed to the twenty-five-year storm event. And then, excuse me, home slabs or building slabs in general are designed to the hundred-year storm event. So theoretically anyway, anything pass here, if you built your house to the bare minimum elevation, your house would flood. So that's what you're looking at here on this map.
I didn't get the seventy-two hour.
I think one was duplicated in the logs. One was duplicated, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Tyler, on, when we had Irma, which was, you know, like you said, stacked on top of another one with high control elevation to begin with. I don't recall, it was close, but I don't recall any home, uh, that was in Gateway proper that, uh, it reached the pad. We're close, especially in Cypress Cave, and I think that was caused by another issue. But Pelican we did have, uh, because weir one couldn't, or I'm sorry, weir two couldn't get the water back out or couldn't get the water out quick enough. And right there in that area that was immediately influenced the weir two, uh, suffered. That's where the water levels went up fast. Did, what did the model show on that?
Um, I think, it might be the next slide, I got a little video actually that shows it, but we, we were pretty close to that. So I don't have in here building height information, other than those two of Pelican. We actually did run that and I'll show you a little slide on that here at the end. Um, but you're correct, as far as I know, uh, no structures in Gateway flooded. It was only the two residences in Pelican that did. Um, the reason for that, I guess, is just because of factors of safety and design of houses. So, you know, your developer has a bare minimum to design your house slab, let's say twenty-four. Well, they never really go to twenty-four, it's usually always to twenty-five, twenty-six, because most people enjoy a factor of safety and they don't, you know, want to go to the bare minimum. Uh, but yeah, so we, we actually did model that and the elevations in those two houses were, showed that based on the survey we have of their building slab, it should have flooded and it did, so that makes sense.
But when I went out after Irma and took the flow measurements, I was, uh, measuring somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and forty C F S at weir two. I'm sorry, weir one, weir one. And weir numbers, I think we're showing like four twenty-four.
Weir two?
Weir one.
Weir one. Uh, we were four fifteen at the hundred-year twenty-four hour.
So we're close, very close.
Yeah, I mean, seven, yes, seven C F S at that scale is like, you know, not much. All right, where are we at? Okay, so we went through these maps. Um, another thing that we looked at in particular, because we did have data on this, is the design elevation of streets. Uh, the one that we chose to put in this report, uh, was the Stony Brook area. The reason we chose to put that is because that area seemed to have, um, some of the highest flood depth during those storms. So this is one example where what we modeled, at least in my experience in real life, was a little bit different. So we were modeling up to a foot of flood depth over those roads. I think in real life, eh, at least when we were driving out there, it seemed like it was higher than that. My- For sure, I agree. And I, there's a couple of reasons for that, at least in my opinion anyway. So the outfall or the control structure that leaves Stony Brook had some issues with it that were recently corrected, I guess I'll say. So I think what this is showing actually makes sense, because I, I think you were restricted from that. And I think this is probably what you should have expected, had it been built like it was designed, because we're modeling based on the record drawings of what was supposedly designed. And then I, I think what you experienced in real life was that it was higher than that. And I think that makes sense because of that restriction in your flowway that was leaving Stony Brook. So anyway, that's just something to point out here. But moving forward, now that that problem has been rectified, hopefully, uh, this, this should be closer to what you expect, which is that during a five-year storm event, you have some but not much water on the roads. And then a hundred-year storm, we expect you to have up to about a foot, which I think is much more manageable than what you experienced last time around.
May I?
Yes.
Tyler, my memory is not as good as it used to be, but my, my recollection is that, uh, in Pelican Preserve, near weir two, for instance, we had a lot more than a foot of water on the roads here. The water went all the way up some people's driveway and was close to the garages. And I have a, uh, community of retirees who go to doctors and hospital appointments nearly every day. And they couldn't get out for at least three days. And we blamed it, I blamed it, on the fact that there not enough money, not enough water was passing through weir two. But you and others had told me-
We topped weir two. We topped weir two. The water went over the top of the-
Yeah, well, yet it's not the same way of saying it wasn't. It wasn't enough?
Yeah.
Have you given any consideration to make any adjustments in that area?
Um, yes. Okay, so- The, a couple of things here. So the specific problem that happened in Irma and the reason why everything flooded so bad, and specifically in Gateway, was because you discharged pretty near to the top of the Six Mile Slough. And the Six Mile Slough prior to that hurricane was just way overloaded and way overtop to begin with. So water was actually going backwards towards you for a little while, out of the slough. And it was all-
Were you talking about Gateway or Pelican?
Oh, well, both, I mean, the flowway, I guess we'll say, so yeah, Pelican. So the problem was that there was just literally no place for you to drain to. So what should have drained much faster just didn't, because of the stage height downstream was so much higher than it should have been.
And we haven't done a doggone thing about cleaning out that area on the far side of I seventy-five heavily.
Uh, we have a project for it. I think you, did you play some of it?
We're working on that right now. Had the surveyor meeting today and, uh, we've gotten permission from Respection Isles and also from Colonial to access their property. And as soon as the water levels drop in February, March, we'll be out there digging that canal out, lining it with T R M and putting stone in the same way we do within links to Stony Brook.
So you're telling me I'm not gonna be able to say we haven't done a doggone thing? Tony, man, two, three years.
That's never a doggone thing anymore.
The slough is a different story, because the backup that Tyler mentions is a, a real cause of concern when you have that much water.
Right, well, the county has spent a lot of money on Ten Mile. Ten Mile was a nightmare and backed up. And then we have the two weirs down there at, uh, if you're going toward town on, uh, Daniels, uh, just before you hit Six Mile Cypress, there's those two weirs. That, when those are overflowing, our chances in, in getting more water, our chances of the water leaving, they're slipping out, it starts backing up. And backwater curves on us.
Ed, are you saying that Six Mile Slough's been dredged?
Yep, they haven't touched it, Ten Mile.
Needs to be.
Hold on, I, I brought that up and somebody said that you know what would freeze over before they allow that.
I know, right, Lee County ain't gonna do it.
They're gonna touch it, so.
If you really have nothing to do and you're looking for, uh, something to entertain tonight, there was a really good presentation that Johnson Engineering actually gave the county. The county hired Johnson to evaluate Ten Mile Canal post-hurricane Irma. Johnson Engineering actually originally designed, I think, most of Ten Mile. And they had their original design drawings like from, I don't know, however long ago, compared to the conditions now and how it's been maintained and how it's been constructed. I should really watch what I say, but the county hired Johnson to tell them how bad of a job they were doing. And it's a pretty interesting presentation.
Yeah, there's, uh, you can find, the whole report is online. And you start looking at the cross-sections as they exist versus the cross-sections as designed.
And they're way different.
Way different. And, and, and the width, including the width, not just the depth, but the width.
Right.
And that's why Island Park flooded twice.
Go down there-
Because that's where Ten Mile Cross is under forty-one. And it's supposed to be this wide and like, mm, this wide.
Go down there behind that orange juice place that are on Six Mile and go south. And then go off one of those side roads and look at that.
Go south on that road that is named for somebody that I've never figured out-
Ripley or something, yeah, I don't know who he is, but, excuse me. Take any one of those side roads and go over and there's Ten Mile Canal. Look at it and it'll tell you right off what the problem is. Absolutely no means, it's just restricted. But they supposedly weren't working on that, so we'll find out.
Buy flood insurance.
So back to your very earlier question, yes, Gately is doing things to improve the flow out of the community, make it closer to what it was, uh, supposed to be.
Your report is worth every cent that we paid for, just to know that.
If it allows us to build the adjustable weirs, it's really worth it.
Yes, right.
For information, Michael Rip was an F T O T district director.
Was he an F H B officer, died of cancer or something?
No, he was a, it says, a former F T O T district director, Michael Rip.
Thank you.
They're known back then, no longer, but they're known back then, yes.
And I can tell that we do, having, you know, flooded, our, Stony Brook was hot, really high water. And was for better part of a week before it was really drivable. And, uh, there were, people could not get in or out of the community unless they had a big, high vehicle. It was really bad. In fact, some cars that tried got stalled. And, uh, there wasn't any house flooding, but there were, I'm aware of two or three garages that took water. Cause in some areas, especially if they were close to drains, the water was higher in those areas. So it was a, a great concern to Stony Brook.
So, so allowing two events real close together?
Yeah, we can prevent that.
But just discharge more water before they get here.
Every time I saw clouds forming before Irma, I thought, we're not, we're not gonna make it.
So this is, uh, we actually ran that Hurricane Irma scenario based on the rainfall data that we had. Um, the two twenty-four hour events here listed were five point four and twenty-four and nine point nine, eight and twenty-four. The seventy-two hour storms were actually more, but we just picked the two twenty fours to tell you about right here. Uh, the lakes were already over control elevation and the discharge at the Irma event was four hundred and fifty-seven C F S, which is forty-three C F S per square mile. You were intended for thirty-seven C F S per square mile, which is why you had a lot of water.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, you were way over. Um, so, um-
Took an engineer to tell us that, well.
But this top right, this is actually, so when you run these models, it takes like twelve hours to run these things altogether. But what you're gonna see in the top right-
We gotta get to a compact computer.
We, we made a little time lapse video of what it looks like. So what you're gonna see in the top right, hopefully, when I click this button, is it's gonna get real blue, which is all that water filling up and the water depths. And then it's gonna get really, really blue, which is the peak of the storm. And then after that, it's gonna start to drain out. At the end of it, when it stops draining out, is the areas that remain flooded, so.
And this is, well, how many hours for this?
Uh, this is a twenty-four hour run. So that's the storm, it's raining, hurricane, stuff's starting to flood, it's getting real high, and it gets really, really high. And then, then it drains out. So if I was fancier, I could probably pause on that. But see how you were blue and now you're getting into red? The red is the really deep stuff. And this is at the end of it, when there was really nothing left to drain and everybody was waiting for everybody downstream to drain. This is kind of what remains. So the red stuff is the, is the high depth and then that, uh, you know, you can kind of see what's going on there. Anyway, kind of, I guess. Um, so lastly, this is what we talked about a minute ago. This was those two structures in Pelican Preserve, that was building ten six five nine and ten six six five. So these two, we actually did go out and survey post-storm. Um, and we compared that building floor to the flood depth that we'd modeled. We found out that the one building should have flooded about point nine-three feet and the one should have flooded about point three-eight feet, which I think if you talk to those homeowners, is pretty close to what they got. So, um, all that being said, now what? Now what do you do? Well, the purpose of this model and how it originated way back when was that we wanted to approach South Florida to make various improvements to your system. Uh, specifically, a couple of the projects that were identified was, we wanted to add operable gates onto your weirs. So when Gateway was originally planned out, all of your major weirs, one through five, or at least two through five, I don't know about one, but two through five were supposed to be operable. The two in Gateway Greens are, they have gates that you can open and you can lower the height at which water discharges from, right? Um, the two in Pelican are not operable, they are just big old concrete walls and they don't move. So right before Irma happened, um, I'm not sure who gives the order, I think the gathering gives the order, but they, they allowed you to dump your water in advance of the storm if you could. Well, that's all fine and great, but you couldn't, you couldn't dump your water through a concrete wall. There was no place forward to go and you had a big old wall and you couldn't do nothing with it. So the plan was, or is, that in future events, if you had operable weirs and if you didn't have a storm right before it, you would be able to dump that water and you would be able to prevent some of that flooding that occurred. So in order to do that, in order to permit those things, South Florida said, well, you have to prove to us that you're not going to negatively impact anyone downstream. That's what this is all about. So this is us proving, hey, here's what we got, here's what we're doing, here's how much water we're gonna send down. And then we modeled that and then we provide assurances to South Florida that we're not going to hurt anyone else with the water that we are moving out. Um, so that's kind of the main goal of this. So those projects like in Hampton Park, where we're talking about low industrial structure of that one particular area, because of those lakes downstream that never got built and the plans changed, um, this would be used for that. Uh, even in Lake Eighty-three, to an extent, the, the downstream impacts of Lake Eighty-three, we can model and say, you know, listen, we're gonna project and move this much water out of it, we don't think that's gonna be a negative impact. Uh, and then if we want to go and change weirs two and three to operable gates, this is what we would use it for. In addition to that, uh, we can look at areas on a broad scale, like Stony Brook for example, and say, hey, listen, you guys are only supposed to get a foot of street flooding, you got four. What's up with that? Well, you already know what was up with that and there was, you know, an issue with the weir and the outfall out of there. But there's, there's specific areas we can look at and, you know, discuss what's happened, talk about, you know, stuff like that. So that's the outcome, that's the recommendations, that's where we're at. There is an enormous amount of information in that report that I would be happy to go over with you if you'd like, but it's very wordy and numbery.
Remind me of something, please, if I may. My recollection again is that Pelican got, uh, a lot of water for a lot of days. And the water from weir two goes on down south. But the, uh, neighbors, uh, south of Pelican, uh, plantation, for instance, they didn't, they never got flooded out like we did. Now, there's something in my mind that won't let me, uh, just let that go, because I always remembered that water went downhill and that if we flooded out, that meant the ones to the south of us where the water was going were supposed to be flooded out too, unless they were built a lot better than ours or something else. And please help me reconstruct that briefly.
Probably the best answer I can give you is that you both go west eventually and they go west further south than you. So when they get to Six Mile, they're further south in Six Mile. So this isn't totally correct, but you basically had to wait for them to drain before you drained.
Correct.
So all of the areas to the south of you, you don't cross seventy-five through the same set of box culverts. They go to a different set that's further south.
That's correct.
And then the other community that's directly south of you, isn't that Bridge Town directly south?
Yeah.
They actually drain into you, into Gateway, and then all drains out. So I don't, I don't know elevation-wise where they're constructed at, but I do know for a fact that they discharge further south into the slough than you do. So that's, in the simplest terms, that's the main reason why they drained faster.
Well, I'm envious that they didn't, uh, that they didn't, that they didn't flood. I would try and find easy, uh, easy solution that we don't flood again.
Uh, I, well-
Quit doing your rain dance, man. Quit doing your rain dance.
And Stony Brook had to wait for Pelican to drain before we drained.
If it makes you feel better, Timber Creek's gonna have to wait for- We're not there for the youth flooding along with them.
No, we want that you flooded along with us.
Couple of issues, that, that drainage basin has far less than seven thousand acres, that's one. Second issue is we have two four by eight box culverts going under I seventy-five. They have two much larger box culverts going under I seventy-five. They go down through and across to, what is that, Renaissance? And then over to Cross Creek, and enter the flowway that we run into right below or above the weir. So they get there quicker and it gets there lower. But the, uh, the big one is, I was gonna say, when we go back to the state, somehow, some way, we gotta emphasize that the Johnson reported water quality, or the Water Master Plan for Gateway predicted this, uh, and warned us that this need to be analyzed as Gateway was growing, and it would never have done. And they specifically mentioned that these weers are temporary. So justification, remind South Florida Water Management District, we're a little late getting back to you, but we learned and got burnt, we need to get it fixed. Then the last one is, I believe, and we learned this after the fact, was that we've got a major restriction of getting the water past I seventy-five, because it goes through that little colonial section, and then it hits those two four by eights. Well, if you recall, we had those pictures that Chris took that showed that mess there, it was nothing but a big.
Bottleneck.
It was bottleneck, that's exactly right. So that hurt us, but i- it was just a comedy of errors of things that happened, not the least of which was, and the killer, was we were at control when this mess started. Putting in the adjustable weers, you got a chance to take it below control.
If you start early enough.
Yes, start early enough, that's exactly right.
But our, our residents are relying on us to do everything we can to ensure that this doesn't happen to them again.
That's right, that, that, in my opinion, cleaning, and you, you talked, touched on it earlier, getting that, uh, a bottleneck cleared is one. But on the other side, on the west side that Chris just was talking about, getting that cleared is important, because if we got bottlenecks that before it gets to Six Mile Cypress, we're not gonna have any, uh, excuse for why it happened, because it's gonna happen again. But if we get our system cleaned up, then we can point the finger at somebody else, i.e. Lee County, that it's your mess that's backwater curbed.
Does this not show Timber Creek's storm water also included in here?
Yes. Uh, let me see if I can slide it in that for you all this.
What's the next step, Tyler? Take this to South Florida and start showing them what we're doing?
Yes. That's kind of small, but these two areas right here, these are your offsite flows that you receive. So all of this offsite is Timber Creek in the area south of Daniels that goes that way. And all of this is Bridge Town that goes north into, into Pelican. So yeah, all of that information is, is in there.
So eventually all Timber Creek will go through Pelican?
Eventually. It goes through, I mean, you don't go through Daniels Preserve and then go west and north, but yeah, it'll eventually go to the flowway.
But it was planned.
It was planned.
It was planned, and as long as we monitor, we somehow gotta make sure that, I forget what it was, fourteen point seven CFS. We gotta make sure they don't get fourteen point eight.
I don't know how you can do that, but.
Been nice to have a weir, but we gotta watch that.
Um, but yeah, to answer your question, sorry, I feel like I'm yelling at this thing. Uh, to answer your question, yes, the next step would be, uh, if you want to move forward with specific projects now's time, if you wanna start looking at operable weers, now's it.
We need a motion approving this report and authorizing them to proceed with contact, plumb and only contacting South Florida Water Management District, just, uh, along the lines of getting these adjustable weers. Is that the next, is that what you need?
Or is there a task authorization that you need in order to push forward the, the weir adjustment?
Um, I mean, I think if, you know.
If it gets our approval first.
If that's it, I mean, I don't know if you need to approve the report, I don't know, that's something to do with it. I mean, if the, if the goal is the board would like to move forward with converting weers two and three to operable, we would come back to you with task authorization to design that operable, design and permit that operable weir. But we could get their approval first, South Florida?
Yeah.
Well, we'd get their approval by designing it and permitting it, and that would be the approval. And we're not gonna.
I want the appropriate for the board to adopt or tip this report, and give authorization, the task authorization to prepare, uh, Tyler was talking about, because then you go to the pre-application meeting for South Florida and submit the application.
I, I wouldn't.
Is that fair?
But I wouldn't limit it to two and three. I'd do two, three, Hampton Park, uh, and four and five. Because four and five have no way to do it, they have a way to do it, but it's crude and it's dangerous. Opening those weir sluice gates, all it takes is one rock to get in there, and you can't close it, you are up creek without it, you know what? You're trouble. So we, we really need adjustable wears.
We need, um, almost a, a remodification of the existing weir system. Uh, and then, once we get that estimate, we see what, then we can either phase it, or depending on the calls, we can approve all or pieces.
Well, there's no doubt about it, if you fix the one at the top and send the water down without fixing the one at the bottom, Pelican Preserve could get more water.
I was gonna say.
You gotta start at the other.
I'd like to settle to that.
Yeah, we gotta start, we gotta start at the bottom.
First, what I'll do is I'll just make a motion that we accept the surface water hydraulic modeling presentation presented by Tetra Tech.
Before you vote.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Could I ask a question before you vote? I think that, that you need to look at all the weers, just looking at two of them, Hampton Park has weers.
And we agree with that.
So that needs to be part of the motion, is to request.
Well, we're gonna place a motion. We're just accepting the report first.
Don't delay.
So that's the, first motion is to accept, uh, to accept surface water hydraulic modeling, uh, presented by Tetra Tech.
Yeah, check.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is, oh, go ahead, you have a question.
Why do we have to make a motion to accept it? It's under reports, and I just thought that was for information.
It was better with South Florida.
No, the board can take action on it, since it wasn't agenda, I don't, and I think it is better that Florida sees that this board is human and is behind it.
We received and accepted by.
We needed to add explanation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So in the second motion, I may need some help crafting this up, but we, we authorize Tetra Tech, um, to, um, to analyze our existing weir structure.
Structures.
Structures, the complete weir structures, uh, and come back with recommendations for enhancements, um, including cost and level of, level of effort.
That's all of them, and then we can implement their construction, but we're permitting or shooting to permit them all at one time, so that we don't have to go back and do it again.
Correct.
I would agree with that.
And that would include task authorization, so that we know what we're looking at money-wise, because we can always peel that back and do it, phase it.
Yeah, we're approving a task authorization for Tetra Tech to analyze our existing weir structures, come back with a recommendation for enhancements or modifications, uh, and that would include cost and level of effort.
Well, approving the creation of the task.
The creation of the task authorization, exactly.
Yeah, because we need to see that to approve it.
I'll second, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion on that?
Can I ask a question then?
Sure.
So, would you like us to come back, maybe the next one? You don't have two in December, right? You only have one in December?
Right.
Maybe the next one, and tell you, you know, okay, here's your five, six weers that we're looking at, here's how much we think it would be, you know, design, construction, design, construction for each one, and then, you know, what you can do to those weers, and, and then we can kind of make a task authorization based on what you think you want to do with those, is that?
And, and I'd say priority, and prioritization in, in the modifications. So we've got the five weers, there, there's probably two or three that are high priority, that impact, you know, flow. The other two might be, look, if you're gonna do it, you might as well modify these, you know, uh, whether it's an enhancement, you know, for the two that.
We've got to start at the low end to go up, or otherwise you're just gonna flood it worse, putting more water down below the stream.
You come back with your recommendation of how you think we should move forward.
Okay, we'll write a little memo summarizing everything.
Yeah, if you have Tyler Parker, it might be wondering if the Water Management District is now more amenable to the deductions, and, uh, based upon all the flooding, it might be best to get as much as you can now, as opposed to five years.
That's why we did it permitted, right?
And you have, you have an extra period, I think you have five years to construct, wait.
You have five years, but you can drag the five years on for way longer.
That's what I'm saying, so if you can get it, get it, then you can decide. Now that they've ever seen South Florida change their line.
So we have a motion in a second to have Tetra Tech inform, create a task authorization, and give us recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is chair.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Tyler, on your model, would it, would it show in the flowway any bottlenecks, like on flow?
Yeah.
We were looking at bathymetrics, are there any areas that, that you've identified, or couldn't you identify from this? Say we're gonna go prioritize the bathymetrics, say here's a few pinch points we've seen.
Um, bathymetrics meaning like the depth of the flowway?
Right. But maybe, maybe in the flowway itself, does that model actually get to that level where you could say, oh, the water flow is slowed here, or there's restrictions here?
It, yes. Uh, it would depend on where you have your data recorder set up at, because we can model what it should do, but then we would have to compare that to how that's flowing on your data recorder. So like if you, I think you have one on your weers, Tony?
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, we could do that, we could see, you know, it should flow from three to four, you know, at this rate, you know, whatever. But, you know, it's actually staging up higher between weers two and three, yeah, we could do that, yes.
Chris, are you trying to get to the fact that we have a elevation issue upstream of weir three, that we found out when the two models came together and missed by about forty feet, and we got all that sediment in there?
Yeah, we, we've got three areas identified right now where we want to take a look at it, permit conditions, construction addition, um, conditions, and then also the current condition.
That's the one.
We're gonna do the bathymetrics, we can do that comparison with the fill-in, at the same time, we'll do those core samples you mentioned. And also, I was gonna see if you want to give a shout out to Chris Hagan Engineering, because I see you use all those photographs in your report.
Absolutely, I use much of his stuff in the report.
Was that white SUV traveling along Stony Brook, the chairman's?
That's Margaret.
That's what I thought it was.
I looked at that one to see if it was, but it does not have a sunroof, so it was not mine.
But it had your license plate.
Photoshop them, yeah.
Sure looked like it.
I thought so too, but I took a look at it, went out, no sunroof, not me.
I just, I sat in my backyard, and it was entertaining to watch these vehicles that had no business trying to get through those waterways. And when someone would stall in front of them, and they had the exact same type of vehicle, think, well, that's not gonna happen to me. And they get stalled like that.
I didn't take my vehicle out at all, because I didn't want to crack my block.
Do you have to take this, or, or will you go to them, or mail this to them, or go meet with them to plumb and early start the, the process on this?
I mean, I've discussed it with them, just the findings of it. When we go to permanent, we'll basically give them a pre-post, we'll give them model, you know, before our improvements, and model after our improvements. And we'll give them a model output file, that's basically what we'll provide to them.
And, and one of these, I think you mentioned, forty-three CFS?
Uh, in the Irma condition, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's six above what our discharge, lava discharge is.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Thank you very much.
That's good stuff.
Very good.
Very good. Um, with that?
Have a good evening.
Good evening?
Yeah.
See y'all there?
Aye.
No, that's yours.
Work A, Pelican Resort and Conservation, which is a court.
You get your two max, and there you go.
Who's on first?
I don't know who wants to go first, we'll get him back and work.
I could start it, Tony, and this is very, very similar to the Magnolia Lakes situation. And that's why we brought it up, and with Magnolia Lakes, um, you know, you have some permitting and conservation easements involved. And with Pelican, we've been approached by, um, WCI, because there's eleven different areas within Pelican, where they've basically encroached into preserve areas with golf cart paths.
And others.
And, well, that's the, that's the minor part, and, and I presented this to the P-PAC at the last meeting, we went over in detail, and made the analogy to the Magnolia Park situation. In one situation, they have some storage tanks for the golf course that are within the preserve areas that will cause removal of those tanks and replant in five years' worth of monitoring.
Storage, what kind of storage?
Uh, golf course irrigation, where they just do some chemical mix in, they're small tanks, yeah, I think they're eight hundred gallons. But they have to move those tanks, replant with wetland species, and do five years of monitoring, much the same way that they'll have to replant at the Magnolias site, except it'll be upland vegetation in a shorter monitoring period. We've moved forward and, um, requested from the school board a license agreement that would state all the terms of the contract with Johnson, and also involves Suffolk, um, also because how do you let Suffolk come on our property and plants, and Johnson monitor on our property? So we've given them, Tony's provided a draft license agreement, and our proposal and what we suggest is doing the same thing for WCI, a license agreement that spells out the terms of the monitoring and the replanting, so that they're bound by that, not just, oh, we submitted a permit, we're going to do it.
So what do we need, we need a motion?
I would say authorize staff to finalize necessary agreements, including a license agreement with WCI, and our four, this, uh, encroachment remediation, uh, and authorize the chair to sign the documents.
I'll, I'll make the motion for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, ahead.
How did this happen?
Well, they basically had all those preserve areas, and in most cases, it's just golf cart path, maybe ten feet up into a preserve area, and the Water Management District considers that passive recreation, so they aren't really annoyed by it. But you have to go in and modify those permits.
Who caught this?
Uh, when they were doing the switchover, or the final turnover from WCI.
South Florida caught it?
Uh, and I think WCI themselves caught it with entitled work.
And we're gonna, following the motion, we need that for WCI to pay legal fees, and we got the fees associated with this.
Motion maker agrees, seconder agrees, WCI must have paid me, put the WCI law, okay?
And we'll, the school board will be bringing that license agreement there, commenting back at the, probably December fifth meeting, have it. And that's just to ensure that all the terms of the permit, what they're gonna do, are met, not only in that permit, but by the license agreement.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? B, Magnolia Lakes Wetland Restoration.
Leslie, you wanna present?
We're not eleven thousand dollars.
That's, that's the same. I think we're ready to move to utility, build the Magnolia Lakes, they'll be bringing that December fifth, and that draft license agreement's been provided to the school board and Suffolk Construction.
Okay, I'm just gonna, on the Magnolia Lakes, we don't need to do anything, because that's coming back December fifth?
Correct.
Okay.
Set the eleven thousand dollar lesson.
Just wanted to, I, I keep thinking that, I was waiting for this, so I could comment now, it's just two things, I, I'll wait for the fifth, but just looking at the meeting book, I did have a question in regards to the actual plan. Uh, was the plan revised, because, um, the original plan was dated November first, and that's the one that, uh, Chris had passed out at the last meeting. And the email that was attached with the board pack today, it had an email dated November fourth, at two PM, and I was confused in regards to the two year and five years. My understanding at the previous meeting would be five years for the county, two years for Southwest Florida Management District. But on this email, page one, that's not what it says. And so I didn't see on the board book, a updated restoration plan. And then this only other thing that I had was, um, under the affidavit for authorization that Chris would sign, item number four, I, I wanted just clarification on what the statement that the property would not be transferred, conveyed, sold, or subdivided, um, I wasn't sure if we could go into that now, because if we need to make any changes, we should do it now for the fifth, so we don't delay any longer.
We're right now waiting for the fifth to then bring that license agreement and the terms of that license agreement, because that document won't be signed until that license agreement's approved by the board. And the, uh, the D.O. release is a standard county document.
The, the development order, does that mean that we, if we accept their monitoring of this for two to four, two to five years? I guess it's two years for one entity and five years for the other? That we cannot deed this over to Magnolia Lakes at some time in the future?
Well, I think we can deed the property over, but we can't remove the conservation easies of the property.
That's right. Yeah, I think, correct. And, and I think the email I had said that the county and South Florida both will be.
Both five years. Yeah, that's what.
In case you get the cape, but you don't get to eat it.
But, but yeah, we can, South Florida rules and basis of review and the rules allow for deeding and transferring the property are just subject to the permit. Then you need to fill out the necessary documentation and the conservation easies are remunerated in place. Have you considered just putting this off for a while? The concern is, like, my, my perspective is, well, they can't, they're applying for permits and they're wanting to begin doing the work because I think South Florida's requiring them to do the mitigation work. And I'm not comfortable with their word that they're gonna install everything and they're gonna do the monitoring for five years. Because Suffolk Construction next year can say, you know, we're tired of coming up to Gateway. We're not gonna go out there and file our reports with South Florida. And we get a knock on the door from South Florida saying.
You own it.
You, uh, yeah, it's your permit. You're the operating entity. You know, you need to start doing the monitoring and oh, by the way.